Good morning, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Town in Canaan. It's Tuesday, June twenty seventh. This is the third meeting in June. We ordinarily don't have three meetings a month, but this is starting at eight thirty-two. It is a hybrid meeting. Anybody out from Zoom?
This is Mike Dian. That's it, seventy-nine.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda, actually, we're adding in an item. It's the Plan of Conservation Development's contract with SLR International. I'm approve amend the agenda to add this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes. This is the last meeting. Any comments, corrections?
I just had shared with Tiger and Tucker on the capo baseball field, just to clarify that it's the new varsity baseball field. And we had a conversation, we wanted to take the word stadium out of that. So.
It sort of is a stadium, but.
Is it?
Well, when you add that much seating, it becomes more than a field.
How much seating is there?
It hasn't been planned yet, but.
Right.
There'd be at least a hundred on either side, I would imagine. We have, this is what's reason, you know, to go forward with the design and see exactly what we, what our options are.
Right. It sounds like it's going to be the size of Dunning Stadium in other way.
I know. No. But I guess it's in the eye of the beholder what a stadium is, but.
Yeah, anyway, it'll still say stadium at the top because that's how it was listed on the agenda, but I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, with that change, I move your per the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public comments. There are no one from the public here in the room, no one online. So, but members of the public are welcome to provide comments on the agenda topic, schedule review and or vote, and you can submit electronically to BOS distribution at canacyt.gov. But here we know public comments, we'll move on to item three. Tiger, you have a couple of items here to.
That's what you're doing.
This is the air conditioning.
Oh, yes. I work for approval to purchase a and replace the HVAC unit in the Irwin apartment currently housing IT offices. The unit is almost thirty years old. It it kind of burnt down on us about a year and a half ago. Now, we have money in the capital money come July one to replace it. This will replace the air handler, the heating components, because that's also supplemental heat and the air conditioning for that space.
So we move the IT department over there sort of permanently if they because the wave in the bathrooms were being built adjacent to their former offices. So this I expect will be the permanent home unless we decide.
Yeah, it works good for them.
Something else with Irwin. And this is really more for heat than air conditioning because there is a.
Both. It's for both because it's an older building and what happens in the winter when it gets down to low thirties, the heat doesn't work that great in there. So this was a supplemental heat they had it when they were on it way back when. So, and I my office used to be up there, he was it.
Is it in the basement or?
No, it's it's in the garage where three car garages next to the right sided house. There's an apartment there.
It's actually, no, I mean, where does the HVAC system?
It's actually in the garage. It's in a closet in the garage and the unit is right behind the building. So it's a standalone unit. It's nice.
Under the stairs.
It's under the stairs, correct? Yeah, in the garage, yeah.
If you want to visit.
I've been there.
Worth a visit, so. Anyway, any other questions?
No.
About this item? I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with MA Garamella for the total amount of fourteen thousand eight eighty-nine. Well, plus contingency. So the total sixteen thousand three seventy-eight for the replacement of the current failing HVAC system at Irwin House Apartment as described by Bill. Second.
Second here.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good day.
You too.
Thank you. The this next item is for blanket purchasing for the Highway Department. All of these requests are based upon prior year's expenditures. So we have a series of requests. I can answer any question you might have. The Highway Department is right now working on a.
So when you talk about prior years, you're talking about just going back to the same contractor like, you know, Carl Chevrolet.
Correct. Yeah, well.
We've been using Carl Chevrolet.
Well, Carl Chevrolet would be in essence, you know, for they're servicing our Chevys, right? And then same thing with McMahon Ford is servicing our Fords, right? You know, we we've bought them from them and then they come back and service them. Some work is on.
And WB Mason's coffee or whatever it is.
Yeah, coffee, water, what office supplies, other things that might be necessary.
So most of this stuff is not going to be bid out because it's just been service providers that we've used time and time again. And there's no reason to.
That's correct. And some are some are more on a sole source like ONG for asphalt. They're the only, they're the only person in town, you know? So when we go to want to buy our patch, our hot patch, we're going to go to ONG predominantly unless it's during the winter. So, yeah, exact same thing. They've been tried and true across the board. We have done comparisons, but some people are sole source providers. You know, they're the only one that would provide that type of pipe, you know? Ferguson Waterworks, you know, their drainage supplies are the only one that supplies HDP in the area for us, and they're also at on a state bid. So. But, yeah, so.
Good.
So Tiger, we do these purchase order blanket purchase orders for all of your departments. Does this basically cover every everything in highway and engineering or will?
Discover is highway. It should have just said highway. Sorry, this is highway and engineering. Engineering will be next in July. We did, we did the sewer department already.
Right.
And then the Parks Department will be coming and building. Bill will be bringing his next time. So July eleventh, we'll have those for you as well.
Okay. Right. The highway is pretty much done.
This is this is done for highway, yeah, as far as a blanket purchase order goes.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. No further questions. I move your per this request from the Highway Department to purchase the following goods and services and so listen on our tablet list. As described by Tigers. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This next item Maria will present.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As part of the town's requirements under Connecticut Deep General Permit, as a municipal separate storm sewer system, also known as an MS four, we're required to prepare an annual report documenting our efforts to adhere to the requirement of the general permit. The town GIS and MS four consultant Tyne Bond submitted a proposal for preparing the MS four twenty twenty-three annual report. Also included in the proposal is fieldwork monitoring. Based on previous screening efforts, outfall screening, sampling and monitoring is needed for six of the hundred and seventy-four stormwater outfalls and those we've been monitoring yearly, just to make sure that those numbers still fall within line. Time Bond's work will include meeting with the town to discuss MS four plan goals, preparing the twenty-three annual report and completing a transmittal to Connecticut Deep. Time Bond's outfall screening sampling work will include site visits and recording results for inclusion in the above mentioned MS four twenty-three annual report. Consistent with the last few fiscal years, Tyne Bond will perform this fiscal year twenty twenty-three work for a lump sum of fourteen thousand. We recommend that the contract be awarded to Tyne Bond for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars and funds are currently available in the fiscal year.
Questions?
What? So when does the report do? And is it posted to our town website?
So the current twenty-two annual report in draft form is on the website. It's during its forty-five day review period. So anyone in the community can look up and review and make any comments that they want. And then once that forty-five day review period is over, it gets submitted in final format and that'll be the middle of July. And that's the twenty-two version.
Got it.
And so this work is for to document all the hard work that's been done in twenty-three, so including catch basin cleaning repairs.
Road sweeping.
Road sweeping, all of that. We get credit for that because that is taking pollutants and erosion out of our waterways.
And that will be in the twenty-three report, which will be a year from now. Same thing. Okay.
Same thing.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's a five-year permit. It's a five-year total permit. We're in like year three of it. This is our second or third subsequent role. So we've been working with Tyne Bond for almost a decade on this on this initiative.
Thank you.
Yeah, this comes to us every, pretty much every year. I always get scared because MS four, it sounds like a gang or something.
Street sweepers. Yeah.
No further questions. I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Tyne Bond for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to prepare the two thousand twenty-three annual report as described by Maria. Second.
Second.
For the discussion.
Then.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Maria.
That was yours, Nick.
Thank you.
Cheryl, why don't we take Sarah now?
Okay.
This is the item we added to the agenda. Good morning, Sarah.
I like the swag, Sarah.
Always got to represent. So the POCD Subcommittee as an offshoot of the Planning and Zoning Commission over the last two months has been interviewing candidates for a consultant for our twenty twenty-four POCD update. Just a little background on the POCD. Very broadly, the state of Connecticut requires that every ten years municipality creates this plan of conservation and development or updates a previous one. And so we're we're due for twenty twenty-four, so we have to get that done by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we we have about a year and a half, so we're we're in great shape. But so eventually it's just to take stock of where the town is at, you know, who are we? What is our identity? Where do we want to be? So where does the public see us going over the next ten years? Where do various stakeholders want us to be in ten years? And then we need an actionable plan of how we get there. So from our RFP, we interviewed five or we got responses from five firms. We narrowed it down to three. We did an email interview round to narrow it down to two. And then on June seventh, we had a special meeting, had our final two consultants, which was SLR and BFJ, who the town had used in the mid two thousands for some plans. We interviewed them and after, you know, lengthy discussion, we felt that SLR was the best fit. Price tag is probably a little larger than it was in twenty fourteen. I think the the key difference is SLR is a very large firm that has a lot of resources that when we used Urbanomics and Glenn Chalder in twenty fourteen, you know, that was a one man band kind of small shop. And so this is, you know, a much larger firm that I think while our twenty fourteen plan is great, I think this, you know, can really help the town. You know, come up with a plan that is the Cadillac of all plans, you know, to really help us. I think, you know, the last few years have been very challenging. There's a lot of pressure from the state. So I think, you know, the town deserves a very nice plan to help us move forward.
You know, some we said for Glenn Schalder, though, I mean, he did a great work because he was a small entrepreneur and did a lot of small towns. We're still a small town. I don't like the idea of a Cadillac plan per se, but any questions for Sarah?
Oh, has the contract that was in the on the tablet, has that been reviewed by legal?
Yes, he drafted it.
I'm sorry.
Our legal team drafted.
Oh, our legal team drafted. Okay, perfect. And then let's see, you said December to twenty twenty-four. So that this budget amount, hundred and forty-eight thousand will be in this upcoming fiscal year.
Yes.
Will some of it spill over into the next fiscal year?
Yeah, so we have sixty thousand from this most recent budget year that's ending that got moved into special projects. So that's where we're getting some of it. And then a hundred of it is coming from this fiscal year. So if if there is some run over, we'll move it to special projects.
Okay. Okay, okay, very good. And so when does this get start? Oh, one of the things that I had read about the public hearings and public meetings and so forth, will the meetings with the subcommittee and the staff also be available to the public?
So the subcommittee meetings will be, the staff meetings are going to be more internal, just planning for the subcommittee meetings, but those will be public hearings.
Subcommittee ones will be. Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
So what's the schedule? When will they begin the?
So the goal is to start in July, and so it's a twelve-month contract. That's typically how long they've done other plans. Most recently, they did Weston and most relevantly, it takes about a calendar year. So assuming we start after the fourth, we'll start around then. And then first public hearing where we want public comment, we're aiming for September, once everyone's back from summer break. So we should be wrapped up midsummer next year.
So so this is a pretty important.
Yes.
Document, right?
Yeah.
Because we always look back and say, like, what are the latest POCD say? You're the template. What do you see in terms of big ticket issues that might be brought brought forth in the next year? So I know I was talking to Maria Copeland with respect to permeability. And I know when Westport, for example, they now have, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, a permeability permeability threshold with respect or or actually it's a it's a gating factor in terms of being able to put in additional housing, pavement. You know, it's permeability. Is that correct?
So I can't speak to Westport. I know Greenwich and Stanford have that sort of requirement where we only regulate building coverage, but Greenwich and Stanford regulate building coverage and impervious area.
Which is, you know, it's it's different, obviously, because, you know, there's more land per capita.
Yeah.
In Ucanan, but, you know, according to Maria, I think Westport has done that. And, you know, the concern is, you know, hey, if this thing is coming down the pike, what do I need to, you know, do I need to get grandfathered in? If I want to put an addition on my house?
Yeah. So I mean, one of the biggest items on the POCD that I think the whole subcommittee and the whole commission want to address is infrastructure and sustainability. So, you know, there's a lot of pressure from the state and other factors to get affordable housing in. But how do we do that in a sustainable way where we're not taxing our existing infrastructure and building some sort of unsustainable development that's just filled with impervious area? So I think in that example, that would probably be an actionable item. So we have to start really broad and then go down. So that would be an example of an item that the POCD could suggest that the commission take take action on in the future. And I think there's there's already talk about that because other towns are buying into that. And I do think it's a very important shift in zoning regulations to start including that because you could, you'd have a four acre lot filled with just blacktop driveway if you wanted to right now, which is not recommended.
I mean, with respect to affordable housing, presumably a new installation of a new committee or commission with respect to affordable housing would helpful, I would think.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah. What other issues besides sustainability and affordable housing do you do you see that could be potentially fraught with some political? You know, upside or downside?
So I think the other big one truly is infrastructure and, you know, figuring out what capacity do we still have for stormwater sewer, you know? We want our downtown to continue to be as vibrant as it is and, you know, similar to the Burdice Avenue development.
See that as a problem today with respect to infrastructure, you say downtown, the town village.
I do think it's a concern because we don't fully know. We don't fully know what our capacity is or isn't. And so, you know, we we had like the Burdice Avenue development where we've just approved it and it's this great project that people are excited for. But we don't know what sort of impact it truly has on the sewer system. Can we allow five more Burdice Avenue developments? Can we allow ten more type developments? We're kind of going at it blindly.
Well, on that score, though, you know, Tiger, we're doing a sewer study for the first time in how many ten years or more? That's critical to be able to understand where we are. It's been
Completely agree.
Critical issue of the current eight thirty G proposals. And Burdice Avenue is a small development compared to other things that have been.
I mean, it's twenty units, which I think is significant.
Yeah. The whole issue for us, though, is, you know, we are now a coastal town where the state is concerned about polluting the sound. We are a town that depends upon our aquifer and the people that have well water and maintaining the quality of our well water is essential for us as a small town north of the Mary Parkway. And so it's a different different ballgame for us than Derry and Westport, Greenwich and so, but it's, you know, a critical issue for us to decide how we're going to remain a small town consistent with other pressures to do things that are tough to do in
Definitely.
Town that's four acres zoning, so.
I just had one question in the RFP. I didn't see it come up in the RFP, but in the response, I did see the reference to transportation. And in particular, will there be a part of the study sort of our how transportation for for Metro North impacts our town and how that will continue?
Yes, definitely. That's that's one of the requirements. So I don't know if I mentioned it, but there are twelve statutory requirements of items we must address. And one of that is transportation infrastructure.
Okay, great.
With that background, I'd like to compliment Sarah for her stellar work as the assistant planner, but she's becoming one more of the the town planner. And for someone who's.
She's on probation.
No, no, no. She's off off probation, but she's she's been doing a fabulous job and and you've only been out of school how many years?
Two and a half.
So, so I'm, yeah, I think everyone in this building is impressed and grateful for all the work you do. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, I move, we approve this request from rather than planning a zoning commission. Where's my additional item here? Request from planning a zoning department to enter to a contract with SLR International in the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand six seventy for the planning consulting services for the two thousand twenty-four Plan of Conservation Development as described by Sarah. Second.
Second.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay.
That's exciting.
It is.
Yeah, but yes. Big project.
Now we get get back to.
Okay, we are here to present the workers' comp and lab contract. And we are excited to say that for workers' comp, we are showing a minus seven point five reduction. And for lap this year, we're going to show a minus two point five reduction. We did sign a three-year contract with the lap because they gave us minus two point five for twenty-three, twenty-four, zero for twenty-four, twenty-five, and a three percent increase for twenty-five, twenty-six. Overall, that is showing a savings of a little over two hundred and twenty thousand for this coming year. For Karma, this year we did win a risk management award. We have worked very hard with our safety teams. We review all injuries and accidents. We work closely with all department heads when staff get injured and we do quite a bit of training. So we are very excited with the contract that they put.
This is this is really great news. I mean, having been on this board for a number of years and looking at the loss experience going south. This is going in the right direction for a change. So kudos to to you folks and your whole team for accomplishing this.
Thank you. Just clarify those dates. I'm looking at the Karma commitment. And it's actually the last one, just to say it goes to twenty-five to twenty-six, three percent. I think you said twenty-four to twenty-five.
I'm sorry, it was. You're right, twenty-five to twenty-six.
So all just all the dates move up a year. Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I would just comment. I mean, Karma is an amazing mutual insurance company for the state of Connecticut. I think they have a hundred and sixty towns and cities out of a hundred and sixty-nine that are using them. And not only do they have, obviously, with mutually owned operation, great experience for towns and cities. I'm astounded that we, I think our insurance bill for a hundred and some odd vehicles is a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars a year, which is kind of like, you know, we brought on the the get about vehicles for total cost of fifteen hundred dollars when they were paying like fifty thousand dollars for insurance privately. So it's an amazing operation. Plus, the most important thing is they have great risk management personnel who work with us and help us devise our procedures and our protocols to make sure that we're avoiding risks. So I can't say enough good about Karma.
Yeah, as an insurance lawyer. You know, the whole concept of group captives is always a good idea, particularly now it's a good idea because, you know, we've got a hardening market and reinsurance market, whether it's liability GL comp or property. And I'm actually, after this meeting, I'm going to be getting on a conference call with a new client with respect to the formation of a group captive. So it's it's good stuff.
Did this document change that's in the portal? Because an earlier version had actually had a breakout of the town and the Board of Ed.
Correct. This is the town and the Board of Ed together.
Okay, this this one. I only got the one.
There should be three.
Fifty-six minutes ago, let's see. It looks like it.
So there's the first agreement. There's the whole financial.
So it it looks like it's been updated to just have this. That's not in our portal anymore. That looks like it's been changed.
Yeah, there was three.
Looks like it was replaced with a, I I remember reading it, but it's been replaced by this memo is in there now. But the original, that chart.
Right.
Could I just hand that to you for a second? That's no longer in the portal, but so it's just curious as to the actual budget and the savings was just, was that on just the town line or and and not on the Board of Ed?
No, it's on both. So if you look at, it's an overall savings on the way we budgeted. I don't know.
Yeah, so on our side, we break it down by the categories where we go through.
Yep.
And then we take the budgets for both sides to say what are the savings between what their actuals are versus what our budget is. Because our budget was up about three percent. I think we had our budget up.
Yeah.
On, so we were doing an actual to actual of what they had with their decrease of seven point five. And then what's our budget and the savings from that?
Okay, so that's in total.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
For the questions, I move we approve this request from the Finance Department to enter to a multi-year contract with Karma and the Board of Education for the town and the Board of Education as described by Cheryl and Anne. Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tucker, why don't you come up and present the two appointment items?
I think many of you know Bob Doran. He has been serving in the Area Nine Cable Council for some time and his term is up and they've asked us to reappoint Bob to that position or somebody to that position. As you will notice, included in that was Paul Sedlak, also served on as an appointee to this for a while, but he stepped aside and so Bob is asking to be reappointed. And you will note that it does allow for up to two representatives. So there's the opportunity to appoint somebody else if we decide that we would want to.
Have we have we had? I don't remember. Do we ever have two people?
Well, Paul and Bob served.
Prior to that, prior to Bob.
Have been serving, but now that.
No, I mean, prior to Bob getting involved in town.
I think.
It was just Paul.
Might have been.
I think so.
That goes way back. Yeah.
I think Paul, I think Bob's been on there for a number of years.
Yeah.
But he was.
As long as I can remember, Bob's.
Side the operation. He really, he took over directing.
Maybe that's.
From Paul, Paul, obviously.
That's it.
Paul probably served for twenty years. I'm sorry, we're going to give a shout out to Paul for thanking him for his many years of service.
Tucker, I don't know, we want to go off range here, but his bomb gotten all he needs to upgrade tech infrastructure here, if not.
I might have reported, I can't remember which meeting, but we did recently receive a grant, a pure grant for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to redo. And so we're well underway to redo the AV and audio in this room and in the boardroom to meet all of the, I mean, we're doing a fine job this way, but this will be.
Even even, you can't spend enough to get.
And we we were holding because we were hoping to get the grant and we were awarded the grant. We're thrilled. So we're already underway with a we've talked to several companies and Vision Point has won the contract and.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I just go back to the council. Looks like we can have up to three over twenty thousand in population. And I was looking at the POCD draft and it says we have twenty-one thousand. So we can, so we can technically get three. And I thought this might be a great idea to have either one of the representatives from the Utilities Commission or somebody that we had interviewed but didn't make it to the Utilities Commission because of size, et cetera. So I would recommend that up to another two representatives can be added to this council. I think it'll be a great connection, if you will, between the Utilities Commission and the work that Pura is is asking us to.
I think it's a great idea.
So maybe we can come back at the next meeting with some ideas.
I move we approve the request from who's requesting it, but appointment of reappointment of Bob Doran to the Area Nine Cable Council for term ending July, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is for on TDAC, the Tourism Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have proposed Tara Key, who works over at the library, has been there for some time. We thought it was very helpful to have representatives from most of the, you know, the organizations in town that we can. And obviously, the library fits that. We thought it was very helpful to have representatives from most of the, you know, the organizations in town that we can. And obviously the library fits that bill. So Tara has agreed to to join us and we've had several conversations and I think she would be a nice addition.
Tucker, why don't you use an update on T D A C in general?
So, yep, we are working. We just had a meeting last Thursday night. We are working on three major initiatives right now. Are the one that we're really pushing to get out the doors is Business Development Guide that will be an online and print version document for anybody who's considering opening a business in town. It will literally take you from point A to point Z. In other words, I'm opening up a retail store. I'm opening up a restaurant. I'm opening up a salon. And here are the steps that you need to take. We spent a lot of time interviewing new businesses in town over the last sort of six months and heard that that was definitely a challenge for some of those that hadn't opened up businesses before. And then those that had had businesses in other towns told us that some of our rules were different, some of our processes were different. So we wanted to make sure we were consistent with that. That's a big part of what we've been working on this year. And then we've been doing some Instagram. I think you might have heard unlocking C T. Actually, Kevin and I attended an event up in when was that? New Haven over a year ago is a sort of a promotional event for New Canaan, for Connecticut. And heard all about, you know, how these Instagram posts are just, these Instagram followers and influencers are really winning the day these days. And so we met these two women who have well over twenty thousand followers and they came down and we did a couple of posts with them. We took them around to all the different assets, if you will. And then finally, we're hoping to refresh our videos, the videos that we did six years ago. We're hoping to refresh them. They're very evergreen. They still do a nice job, but they were really geared at, that was a time when we were really trying to attract people to move to New Canaan. So now we're hoping to refresh them with all really about the downtown, really a real focus on the downtown and the businesses that are in the downtown. So we think Tara would be a nice addition to to our group.
Great idea.
Any questions?
Done here.
I move we approve the request from Tucker as chairman of the T D A C to appoint Tara Key to the T D A C Committee for a term ending December one, two thousand twenty four. Second. All in favor?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, Tucker. Your work, Tiger, back. Finish up.
So this next item is for our latest tree bid from June twenty third. We went out to our normal list of bidders. We received two bids back, one from Alstead Tree and Shrub Carrying, one from Mill River Tree for fourteen separate locations in town. Alstead came in at a quote of thirty two thousand one forty five. They've assured us that they'll finish the work before the end of the fiscal year. It's work that needs to be done and we'd like to have it awarded so they can work on it immediately.
Has the tree warden spent his entire budget?
Not yet. We're getting close. This this will help us get closer to.
Four more days.
But, yeah, he's he's, Alstead is ready to come out and take care of this workforce in this fiscal year.
Taking your trees, Tiger, where do we stand on our tree project since we have the ARPA funds dedicated to at the parks and also the roadways, south roadways.
Right. The South Avenue Relief Project, we have a, we have a design, we have a layout that we've been working on with the Beautification League. We are waiting for state approval as far as a D O T permit. It has to go both to the the arborist and then to rights away to their permitting process in in District Three. We're part of District Three. So once the arborist says yes, then it'll go to District Three. So we're in that process right now of gaining approval for that. We, we sent out an R F P to several vendors or suppliers for materials. Some of the materials can be supplied right now. Some can be supplied in the fall. So we're working on that process as to picking and choosing where we're going to, what we should do. We'll be coming back to you hopefully in the next budget board selection meeting for an approval of of the purchase of what we can purchase now and plant either now in the spring or in the fall. And then as far as the park side goes, we're working with Keith Simpson Associates on a plan for waving. So he had to wait for bud out, wait for the leaves to bud out and then actually determine where and when to plant. His his plan is almost complete. We're working on that with the conservancy. Once he's finished with that, we'll meet with the conservancy and then have a path forward as to where we would like to see additional plants and waving specifically.
But we should, we should be planning to plant this fall, but at least by this fall.
That's our, that's the goal. That's correct.
Lots of trees, which we haven't done in a lot of years. Take trees down. Then I'll put them back up.
Aren't we, weren't we the tree city of America?
Tree City, USA. We were, yeah, we're, yeah, that we have been a recipient of that in the past. It's a, it's basically paperwork that has to be filled. We haven't had a, in the past couple of years, probably because of COVID, we haven't had a an Arbor Day celebration. That's one of the requirements since it's the Arbor Day Foundation that provides you the Tree City, USA. We can look to the tree warden to see if we can't do that again.
Sure. Good reason to have a party.
Exactly. Any questions? I move we approve this request from Tiger for the tree warden to enter into a contract with Alstead Tree and Shrub for the pruning, removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town for a total thirty two thousand one forty five. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Why don't you stay there for the contracts? Any questions about the contracts?
Just just one, I think Tucker, this is the one you, maybe you were talking about Vision Point, which is the upgrade. So so we have to pay a little bit to start. And then they, the And then this nine thousand nine hundred and fifty five is ARPA or is that from? That's for the I see. So we list all the contracts, whether the sources, ARPA or the town budget or what. Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Tucker.
Any other questions about contracts? That brings us to selectmen's comments. I would just comment that Greg Rods has been making great progress within the grant area. It's tough with a town like New Canaan to qualify for a lot of grants from the mainly from the state and but we're hopeful. We're going to get some news about a state grant soon for both the police department and the and the playoffs, so. And other than that, I, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Sorry. Um, it's a really question for you, Kevin. I've had a couple of real estate agents come to me and ask me what the process is when the town is disposing of property or purchasing property. I don't know, we've done a lot of property stuff in in recent years. So I guess my question is, and and they were basically like, you know, is this something that we can bid on with respect to?
I know what we're referring to.
I'm talking about when we, okay, two twenty Elm.
Real property?
Real property, yeah.
I don't understand the question.
Well, we had brokers with respect to some of the sales, did we not?
I'm still not understanding what.
Two twenty Elm, we purchased, we, I think we paid six million dollars to Bankwell and then we.
Cost for the building, I think, was one point seven.
Right, because we sold two units out of the three. Who 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 did the sale?
No, no, no. We sold the second floor entirely to an investor, which happens to be.
And was there a brokerage fee payable?
We didn't pay any brokerage.
We didn't. Nobody paid anything to any broker that.
I don't know whether, I don't know whether.
Okay, but let's just go back. Let's just say we we decide to sell Vine Cottage. I know we talked about doing that before. How would we go about doing that? We just simply, simply, simply listed Tiger?
Same thing. We did it twice before. We issued an R F P.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, with the town property, we'd have to issue our.
When you were going to sell the police department.
I wasn't going to sell the police department unless we had a plan for a new, a new police department.
Understood. I got that. And for whatever reason, that didn't, that didn't occur. But we we have, you know, again, this is not coming from me. This is coming from real estate brokers who are asking like, if the town is selling something, is there a process by which we can participate in that? Because at some point, it might be helpful to have a broker.
I think the advice from Bertrand Moses is we always issue an R F P for town property. We don't, we don't.
Yeah, I've talked to Bertrand Moses, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I still don't understand the import of the question of what it relates to. We were buying two twenty. We weren't selling anything.
We we didn't sell, the town did not sell. I think the town sold.
Only because of the timing, right?
I understand it was staged.
Wanted to close by December.
Understood. And then in January. Okay, but how do we come up with the buyers of the second floor?
We negotiated with nine purchasers to buy the second floor.
So and there was nobody, it was just the town, it was just you? It was, there was no other broker involved?
Don Corbo's in town.
Oh, okay.
He was actually representing initially the bank, Bankwell.
Okay.
So, you know, the transaction was to buy the building with an investor, right? And we ultimately fight, found the ninth investor. Because of the timing, Bankwell wanted to close by December thirty first. So we had a, he was prepared to buy, but he, Mike Franco was representing him. He couldn't do it by December thirty first. So we had to sell the units to him in 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 January, when we closed by the end of January. So it's just.
So how did Mr. Corbo get involved in the first place? He came to you and said, I have buyers or? I've just, because, you know, real estate agents in town, New Canaan is saying like, how do we get to, you know, to get involved with the town if the town is in the process of purchasing or buying? Understood, although although as I understand, I'm not a real estate expert, but, you know, I know when I buy a house, my real estate agent gets reimbursed, you know, gets compensated for that, whether I'm a buyer or seller.
But again, two twenty Elm was an opportunity.
What's the process? That's all I'm asking. What's the process with respect to the identification of an intermediary, whether you're buying or selling?
Sale a property would always be an R F P.
Understood.
Bertrand Moses said we always have to expose it to the market. We can't choose a broker to sell a property. We can't choose a broker to sell a property. On the buy side, you know, you know, how many properties have we bought in the past twenty, thirty years? You know, in the case of Bankwell, I'm the one that initiated the transaction with Bankwell with Chris Kuzeki. And then we started finding, you know, we didn't want to buy the whole building. What if finance made it clear they didn't want to own the building as an investor, which, quite honestly, would have been a very smart transaction? Because that is.
So the process is basically you just kind of buying and selling and maybe getting somebody to help out.
Five years, I've had one opportunity to to buy a piece of property. So it's.
What happened to Grove Street? Was that?
Grove Street is, what if finance is going to discuss it? We, you know, we have other opportunities there and in connection with our affordable housing. So.
But who, was there a broker involved in that?
There was a listing broker for the seller.
Nobody on the buy side, correct?
Nobody on the buy side that was paid. I mean, you know, again, Mr. Corbo is a resident in town. He's a commercial.
So I, I, with Mr. Corbo, I'm just trying to, I'm I'm being asked about process, process. Well, this is, we talk about, you know, when Tiger comes up and we grill him on, you know, did you bid this out? Did you do this? Did you do that? And he's patient and actually listens and answers our questions. I'm just asking about process.
Again, real estate is very opportunistic. If someone comes to you with an idea.
Yes, it is very.
On a buy side, on a buy side, and that's what's happened. Right? We've, we have been looking at the grocery property for five years. And Mrs. Grasso finally passed away and we had the opportunity to buy the property against other competing purchasers. So and that actually Steve Carl was the main proponent of buying that property. So I, I worked with Steve to get it done.
It's not, it's not about whether buying or selling a particular piece of property is a good idea or a bad idea. It's more about process in terms of how that gets accomplished and how intermediaries, let me finish, intermediaries, if any, are involved and are compensated. That's all.
Yeah, I'm not aware that you know, normally the sellers, the seller of a property is getting, is splitting a commission with a buyer representative, right?
Correct.
So, you know, again, this is a pretty one off process. When we're selling, we clearly will go to the market with an R F P, expose it to the marketplace. We're not going to choose a broker. And on the other hand, we're looking to do things on the buy side. There are people like John Angle, who is a Realtor in town who, you know, can be helpful in approaching people that we're really. I think the sell side is always going to be paying the commission. It gets split with any eligible buy side brokers. I think it's that simple, isn't it? I don't, I don't quite understand what the the point is, but anyway, I wish everybody a happy fourth and I hope to see everyone at the fourth of on July first, it's not.
It was incorrect on the advertiser.
Yeah, rain day is, rain day is July second and the second rain day is July eighth.
Okay, what's the forecast?
Okay, thank you all. We adjourn, I motion, move you adjourn at nine seventeen.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Have a good weekend.
I saw the advertiser.